All right, everybody. The big crowd in the room here. I'm going to call the tonight's meeting to order. If everybody wouldn't mind, stand for the pleasure of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seating of alternates. I will note that, oh, come on in, Chris. Well, Chris is joining. The committee chair, Mark Lockwood, is absent today. And we have seated Paula Johnson tonight. And I will be acting as chair. I am the vice chair, Eric Myers. And if we wouldn't mind, starting from my left, introduce.
Brennan Shaheen, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Bob Lavitt, member.
Paula Johnson, alternate.
Christine Chinney, member.
Eric Lukienbeal, member.
All right, fantastic. So we have a full panel tonight and one alternate seated. Action on the meeting minutes of October. Oh, you guys beat me. All right. I'm going to open up the public session. This is the portion of the meeting this evening where a member of the public can address the commission on an item not on the agenda tonight. And seeing nobody on Zoom, I am going to close the public session. Now we can move on to the action on the minutes of October 14th. I did take a look and all appeared to be in order.
Yeah, good to meet you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, we have two abstentions. Other than that, the minutes are approved. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six of the agenda tonight, which is the public hearing. Normally, we would read the public hearing into, to open the session, but we already did that last meeting. So I'm going to invite the applicant to take the podium and present. And please, when you come up, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, how are you? I'm Damon Weiss with JD Solar. And we are presenting this solar installation in the lowest profile possibility on the property. So that we do everything as, you know, pertains to keeping it out of view. And it's the only spot where sun actually gets to on the property with the fact that we're mounting in the background and the trees where the house is set back against. And it's, it's just 15 foot by 60, 65 foot, sorry, I don't know what time I had, structure. And that's it. And it's using ground screws with no cement. So the helical screws that go in, our setbacks from the side property, you know, we're still 500 feet from the front property, but it's 1,000 feet to the house. It's a bit of a setback. Yes, have any questions? Happy to watch.
I just would have liked to have seen the relationship where the house is to the solar.
There's, it's there. Yep, if you go to the sun's looking, keep going, keep going.
There.
Nope, keep going, one more. One more. There it is. All right, I'll open up with the questions. I did a drive-by. I'm actually familiar with this piece of property and the construction that's been taking place. I do know in Abbey, and maybe you can talk about it a little bit. The solar array is considered in what we would consider to be arguably the front yard for this piece of property. So a variance was required, which the applicant has obtained. But I would note that the house is very far back off the road, as you noted, but the solar is not. So I guess my question to you is, I mean, are people going to see that solar array when they're driving by on the street?
So they would not see the solar, right? For the way it's oriented, it's facing south. So really, if you're thinking about from the street, it would be in on your right-hand side, facing the left-hand side. So it's not, you wouldn't see all 40 solar panels. You would, there would be a low profile at a foot off the air and nine feet in the back, just the side profile of the array facing that way. If you stopped and looked, if you were just driving by, you wouldn't see it. It's because it's still, it's still 350 some odd feet back from the street. So, and the way they land the contours, I think it shields it a lot.
So I guess that my follow-up question would be, and maybe this is a better question for the applicant, would you screen it? Plant a wall of hedge in front of it, arborvitae, something?
I mean, as far, as far as I know, I can let Derek, the homeowner, respond to, but I know they're planning on doing a guardian right adjacent to that. And that would basically do exactly that.
Well, but I mean, we might be more specific, like require you to screen it.
Please, you should step in because I shouldn't start turning my ear on your cover.
Completely unprepared, that me, that is. Thank you, folks. Derek Campbell, the property owner, 129 Barn door Hills Road, and indeed, the applicant. And a great question. Thank you. I guess to back up a little bit, you know, we've been working on this property, goodness, probably lost track, four years perhaps, but throughout the entire project, our, you know, our goal was to have as little impact as possible. And particularly, you know, we learned a great deal when we're working initially with the Wetlands Commission and gained a tremendous appreciation for what that property represents. And to that end, our, what we have done is preserve the integrity of the grove and the indigenous forest along the front of the road there, along the front of the property, I should say, along the road, as much as possible. There's a grove, as you approach from the north, heading south, so we're on the right, there is a grove that, like, we have no intention of doing anything with other than just mitigating the invasive species that have kind of decimated that entire property over the last 50 years. So other than keeping it clean and tidy and so that the, you know, the native trees can grow and the underbrush can come up, that, I think what you'll see is that the array, the proposed location of the array, kind of fits in behind that. I think natural screening, to be quite honest, is kind of the way we envision preventing that from being seen from the road. You know, I want to say it's, it's all of, I thought it was kind of half, is the house is about 1,000 feet back, and so the array is ostensibly halfway, which would be about the 500-foot mark. It's, I mean, I just don't envision any visibility of that from the road. I mean, I've got a trained eye, and when we drive by the house, I, you have to almost stop to see the house. And the array, the location where it's proposed is actually off to the right and kind of tucked in behind. So I don't know. I mean, we've already actually got a nursery growing between that location and the road, kind of like along the, say, the west side of the grove that I was referring to earlier. And we're, we've just been planting constantly for the last three years before we're even there. So, I mean, we're doing our utmost to preserve the integrity of the, of the natural kind of look of the property as opposed to making it look like, I don't know what you'd say, like manufactured. And I think the natural environment, the natural setting would do a good job of.
I guess I appreciate that, but I'll offer just, just an observation and then I'll turn it over to my fellow commission members. I totally understand and appreciate trying to keep the natural setting, the grove, the trees, but yet you've bought a giant solar array in the middle of the natural setting. So some screening may be in order. So just be prepared.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, that, I mean, we, like I say, we love planting trees.
There you go.
There's no end to that. I mean, whatever you think is, would be best, absolutely, yeah.
All right, I'll open it up to the other commission.
Well, I have a question about your planting trees. Are you planting conifers or?
Blend, we have sugar maples. I have an affinity for maples and making maple syrup, but most of what we planted so far are conifers, quite a few cedars up the back, actually, but we do have several sugar maples as well. Oh goodness, dogwood and, oh, I met a loss. Fruit trees, actually, we've got several apple and pear trees, actually, as well. Our, our hope is that this ultimately becomes kind of a small farmstead. The objective, once the finances are in order and we're there at that stage, there's, we're, in the initial development of the site, we had intended to have a small horse barn. We'll see if that plays out or not, but certainly our objective is to kind of have a sustainable property, which includes fruits and vegetables. And we're, I don't know how many thousands of dollars of fruit trees we've already got into it, but they're there.
Okay. So you got apples?
Apples, pears, yep, and peaches.
And peaches?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Raspberry bushes, oh, we've been.
Blueberries?
Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely. There's, there's blueberries. In fact, there's, yeah, we actually even, yeah, yeah, blueberries. There were some ones we brought from out west, but they didn't do too well. It's a game of attrition with the deer, you see.
Yeah. We live on Granby, too.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I think what Commissioner Lukienbeal and Vice Chair Myers are hinting at is, in order to approve this, we might require some fairly specific screening. Are you, are you amenable to that? I think that's really the question they're asking. They're just more polite than I am.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Honestly, yeah.
If you don't mind, I'd just step in. I mean, you know, and only because I've dealt with this, I'm, we're happy to work with you in any way. Obviously, we're not looking to plant tall oak trees or something that's going to, that shade the investment that they're making. But something that would just be, you know, six to eight feet tall or something that helps prevent, you know, we're amenable to it if it's required, but if it's, you know, like, I don't know if all these trees that you were talking about were all already planted in front of them, which would pretty much between the street and the solar. So if that's the case, then I would think you've already got what they're going to look for.
Yeah, I mean, it's coincidental, actually, to me. As far as, like, where we've got this little nursery going, the objective was to have these trees kind of as a, like I said, as a nursery, so they can relocate across the property. Honestly, I hadn't even thought about it. I mean, but we, as far as thinking to screen it, but I think at this stage, to be honest, folks, I mean, we love planting trees. We're, we're all about that. And if it's part and parcel of getting this project done, we'll do whatever's required. Because quite frankly, I think the value of having the solar installation as a, you know, as integral to the way we see ourselves on the land, I think there's certainly no harm in planting more trees. It's well understood and well appreciated, yeah.
I think you partially answered my question, which was, how close can you get to the solar array before you really start cutting into its efficiency, screening?
So luckily, we're not talking about in front of the panels. We're talking about just that small, you know, 15-foot side view.
Okay.
Which essentially is, you don't want to grow up and over them.
Right.
Something that grows more straight up and, you know, not, I don't want to use arborvitae, because that's not something that you would want on the property, I know. But something, you know, if it was a pear tree, and I don't, apologies, I don't know if it's a lower hanging fruit, like, not a tall tree, then something like that would work and it meets your guys' requirements, something that works in with the property of, under plantings.
I guess it would probably need to be, I mean, realistically, we'd be planting along the edge of the.
Like, from the road, like, looking from the road, first to corner, so, you know, so it's 15 feet.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, you know, whatever the trees you're planting, whatever can, you know, be grown with that.
Yeah.
If that, if that's amicable, first, you know, obviously, doesn't want to build a shed, a wall, you know, but also not want to put something out there that's not native because it's just literally a full screen wall that's going to stand out more than anything else.
It's true. There's a notation in the report that was done by our planner that says that it does, will not create glare from the road. Did you agree with that, given the urgency?
No chance.
Okay. Yeah. It's really my concerns.
We've done, we've done studies for that for so many properties in so many towns, and you would literally, there's no code that would allow you to build that close to the road. You know, you'd be within 10 feet of the road to, for that to be angling at your, at the cars at that. And this is facing the other direction, which is 400, 500 feet off the street, so there's no chances. I don't even think you'll see the solar panels, you know, with or without the screen, but regardless, there's no chance of any reflection.
Okay. Nothing further.
I don't have any questions.
I heard some of the commissioners speak about the potential for viewing. It seems like looking, having gone down that hill and looking in there, it seems a lot of trees to the right of your driveway that would probably be shielding that. Hard to know without more detailed plan. I'm not that very concerned. I think it's going to blend right in. People are bombing in and out of there to get to Julian's, they're not going to have time to look into the solar.
Being that the truth. 70 miles an hour.
I also go by there probably twice a day. That's how I get to the center of town. And as you go in your driveway, you have plenty of trees to the, to the south, and there is a good stand to the right. And it's just that one bare area. It's not bare, but it's, it's not, it's, you can see through. That's the area I think that you'd want to add some, some natural screening. I agree, no other bodies, but Eric can give you some ideas of, of low-growing trees that are natural and local and belong in.
Well, you know, I mean, you got some, you have, you have a landscape company working with you?
So, I mean, yeah, we will.
You will. Well, I don't know. You know, we have some pretty good landscapers in town, John, John O'Brien and Don Ford. And I'm sure that either one of them could come up with an appropriate tree for you guys. I'm, I'm thinking of a tree that's low and small, and a crabapple comes to mind. There are a lot of really nice crabapples, and they have beautiful blooms in the spring, and some of them have berries that birds will eat, so it's, it's a nice tree.
Wouldn't you want an evergreen, though? Honestly, since solar array is low, wouldn't we want, you know, some sort of a pine, Christmas tree tree, tree, some sort of a fir, something like that would seem to be more appropriate.
We'd have to scout around and see if we could get a conifer that wouldn't lose the heat.
Something like that might also begin to grow way too big, like, so that's a big concern of.
You'd have to pick the species, you know, correctly.
There's, I mean, hemlock is native and, you know, pervasive through there.
They're in pretty bad shape right now. Well, if they get big there.
They can live. They're, they can get 40, 50 feet tall.
What we do sometimes is we just describe in our motion what we're looking for in terms of screening generally and move it to our planner to make sure that our wishes are followed. How would you feel about that?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, you know, like, I think, you know, I convey and I, it's genuine, I mean, we're, like I said, we've got, we've got an abundance of trees that we're actually anticipating to relocate. And, I mean, if we, if, if we had the opportunity, I think perhaps, would it be efficient to just, like, to, I genuinely, obviously biased opinion, but I genuinely believe that, that it's set so far back off to the right as you come in, that if we put the installation, I'd be more than happy to, like, I don't know how, how it works, but I mean, if I was bonded to say, let's, you know, let's do the installation, see how it looks, and if, if it truly needs some kind of screening, I'll do whatever is required, certainly. I mean, I would, I would hesitate to, to think about going in there and, you know, having to plant all these trees first before it's there. I think if it's there, and like I said, we've got trees on site, and we'd be very strategic with, for example, more than anything, I guess, if I'm going to plant trees, I'd like it to be food trees. I like to eat food, you know, like, and so the fruit trees, really, they, they're manageable. We can, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're a low-profile tree and, and they're productive. I don't know. I mean, I, we're certainly open to whatever.
So the typically way we resolve that is, as Commissioner Chinney says, we're likely going to put in the motion that the issuance of the permit is contingent upon submitting a screening plan to, for approval by the town planner.
Abby.
Which is Abby.
Yeah, so in that case, as we've done before, is if screening is required, once it goes in, I would come out, we made on site, determine what's needed, sign off on the plan, and then the final sign off from July will be issued to close out the project. So that way you can see how it looks, once it's installed, see the view from the road. If it's screened, great, nothing additional would be needed. If there are some gaps that need to be filled in, then we would talk about what could be planted and where to screen it. And that.
Totally fair, yeah. I think that's a lot of both.
So, but would we have to, do we have to?
No, you wouldn't have to do it until after the array goes in.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep.
Installation, as you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, it makes perfect sense. I mean, yeah, absolutely.
And at this point, you're probably looking at this part.
Yeah, to plant anyway.
For planting, yes. Yeah, indeed, right, yeah. No, it would be a pleasure, actually, to, to get that sort of input, yeah. And consistent with our objective, truly, is to try and, and just really have as low impact as possible. It's kind of how we roll.
All right, any other questions for the commission before I open it up to public comment? Nope. All right, at this time, you can stay right there, should be, just bravery.
Yeah.
I'm going to open this application up to public comment. Is there a member of the public present tonight who would like to speak on that application pending before us for a ground base solar array? Ms. Chapel?
All right, very good. She's only a member of the public for five minutes, which is a good thing.
Any, and seeing nobody on Zoom. All right, I'm going to close the public comment. Any final commission questions or observations?
I like solar. I think it's something we should be encouraging.
Any final words from the applicant before we close?
I do, I do have a word, it did, and I bring this to attention just to try and clarify the point with doing the installation and doing the screening, and that keeps the permit open, which I'm totally fine with in a certain capacity. But there's a, fortunately, we're dealing with a tax credit for solar that goes away for something that's not installed this year, which the solar would be installed, but the utility has to come change the meter, which needs the town approval of said permit. So I don't know if it's something we can say, hey, we, we can get permission to operate from the utility, but not turn it on or do, or whatever it is, or just guarantee we're going to do the screening.
I think once the solar array is installed, Abby can go look and others and can see what's needed. You can all agree on a plan. She can issue the permit, and then the, the, the plan will be followed up on in the spring to make sure it's executed on. Or you'll be in default of the application and be subject to that process, which I don't think you want.
No, 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 I'm just trying to say, so as long as we have the plan in place.
Yes.
Then we can get it, the installation would be done.
That's typically how it works.
And then inspected.
She'd give you a reasonable amount of time to get it done in the spring, and then if you don't do it, then you'll be in default.
Awesome. I just want to make sure, because he's not going to want to plant in December, I know.
No.
Yeah. Key point being that we can close out the permit and be hooked up before December 31st, I guess.
Or at least, you know, other towns have not closed the permit, but you can send approval to the utility and at least get that, because that's really what the tax credit's tied to. Other than that, I mean, obviously, I mean, I think Derek is glad to plant some more trees.
Well, yeah, indeed. I mean, we're, we'll, we'll look forward to that. For everything that we've put into this property and all the support we've had from the various commissions, we're not going anywhere, and we're going to be there a long, long time. And we embrace the notion of working with the community to do what's required, absolutely.
Well, very good. Well, at this time, if you're all set?
No, thanks.
All right, we're going to close the public hearing. We have 65 days to respond, but if you wait about 10 minutes, maybe five, you're going to hear about it.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you so much.
Very much.
All right, moving on to the next item is to receive applications in scheduled public hearings.
No applications received.
Fantastic, I like that. Moving on. All right, item number eight is consideration of applications where the commission has concluded, so we have one. It is the public hearing we just heard related to the solar array. I think if we can get some sort of a motion that provides for some sort of screening plan in the future, I think we're good to go here. Everything seems to be in order with the variance. Any commissioner comment?
We make the approval condition on their doing the planning within a certain number of days, you know, like, and when I say days, like, six months. And then if they didn't do it in that time, they'd be, you know, subject to, you know.
I think they're going to need it faster than that, because I don't think we're going to want to submit it for final approval. They want the tax credit, which I totally.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I don't, I think, I think it's, I think they're going to have to submit that pretty quickly to work with that Abby, to have a plan, not to actually do it, but to have, but to have a plan. So that's kind of the motion that I've drafted.
Sounds agreeable. Sounds fine.
Any other questions?
No.
Obstructions? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve an application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations, section 8 dot 29 dot 1 dot 3 for a ground-mounted solar array for property located at 129 Barn door Hills Road. R2A zone, subject to the approval of staff as to a plan for the appropriate screening by the community development officer.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations. All right, moving on to item number nine. It appears we have a referral to accept the Harness Way Road.
Yes.
Want to walk us through it, Abby?
Yep. So in 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a 24-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The approved plans included a loop road, to be known as Harness Way, as well as just under an acre parcel that's in the northeast corner, that's shown as open space on the plan, but it's really a water quality basin there. So as you all probably know, driving by over the past several years, the developer has been working on that development. All the homes have been CO'd, they're occupied, and the road is now complete. The drainage structures, everything is in. So it has been referred to this commission for a report back to Board of Selectmen regarding its acceptance. There is one item I want to note. There's one outstanding driveway apron that needs to be sealed. There were some issues with weather recently that prevented that. So if the commission finds that the road is acceptable, it would just be with the condition that the Board of Selectmen wouldn't take final action until it's actually, until we can verify that it's, it's sealed and all set. The town engineer and I inspected, Department of Public Works inspected, so we have all signed off on it. And now it's turned over to the commission for final review and a report back to Board of Selectmen.
I drive by the site frequently, and it was early on in the construction. I do believe that the original loop road only had, what I think they referred to as the scratch coat, so the first.
Yep.
Of asphalt. And I do believe maybe it was affecting some of the storm called earths, but under heavy rain, that road was flooded.
Yep.
Has that rectified itself?
Yes, it has. And part of that, too, was there were silt stacks in the catch basins.
That's right.
Prevent silt from entering. that prevent silt from entering during construction, so that was blocking the catch basins on purpose, which also contributed to that. But yes, so all the drainage is functioning, there's the top coat, we do have confirmation that all the catch basins have been cleaned out, so there are no concerns.
So it's working as engineered and it's not flooding in it?
Yep.
Question, I noticed also that water quality control basin had several trees die throughout the building process. Is all the vegetation living and well, or would the town be responsible for maintaining that?
Yeah, so they were replanted, and DPW went out there to check out that area, because they will be responsible, and they were, they signed off on its current condition.
Abby, I have a question, and it may not be appropriate for this particular issue, but the berm, who is caring for the berm? I notice on the outside of the berm, it looks like nobody has done any weed whacking, and some of the weeds are as high as some of the lower plantings.
Yep, so it's a good question, there is no homeowners association there, so that's a conservation easement area that's on private property, so DPW would be responsible for the basin area, and it was designed, so it's supposed to be low maintenance with the type of grasses that were planted, but any sort of like weeding or anything within the actual planting areas would most likely fall to the property owner if they're inclined to maintain that.
So my second follow-up question is, who lets them know? There's nobody wants to be a bad neighbor and say, gee, by the way, you know, you're supposed to be doing that. Is there somebody that can let these folks know, because I'm sure that they don't realize?
Yep, so I can send them a letter, but just like any property, too, we don't have a grass ordinance or anything, so we can let them know that this is the berm, this is the conservation area, it is your responsibility, but if they choose to weed it, they do, and if they don't, I don't know, I'm not sure what else we could do.
I think it's a great thing to point out, I think those folks are taking good pride in there, if they realize that that's their area, they own the area, it's their area responsibility.
It's not a big area.
Including the grass strip between the drainage ditch and the road, you know, I'm sure that somebody would, I would.
Well, presumably, they want their property value to grow, and if that becomes eyesore, that's a problem.
There are people mowing, I've seen, you know, lawn mowers going, but nobody.
Yep, we can put together a letter.
I think it'd just be a good idea, thank you.
Any other questions? So the road's in good order and ready to be accepted?
I was looking at the motion that you proposed, and it says, and the open space parcel, and I know you've got a description of what the open space parcel is earlier, do we have to put that into the actual motion to identify it more clearly than just saying the open space parcel, or?
I think it's clear based on the plan, but if you want to reference, you know, you could say the .98 acre open space parcel is shown on the subdivision plan.
Okay. Well, if there is no other discussion needed, the Abby has prepared a potential motion for us with possible modification, I would entertain in that motion being read and put forward.
Move that the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to the provisions of section 8-24 of the general statutes of Connecticut recommend acceptance of the road known as Harness Way and the 9.6 open space parcel identified on the plan, subject to the completion of the sealing of the one outstanding driveway apron.
I have a motion, is there a second?
It's, sorry, it's .96.
I was gonna say .9.
I said .96.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah, I heard it, too. All right, well, with that, in clarification on the acreage, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Nope, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 10, staff report in correspondence.
Nothing to report.
All right.
Although, actually, sorry, I lied, we most likely will not have a November meeting, there's nothing on the calendar, so unless something comes up here in November, it should be clear.
Sounds good to me. Item number 11, any commissioner reports or correspondence? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourn.